Good evening and welcome to the February 9th, 2016 School Committee Meeting. We're happy to have you join us. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. East Hampton Media Channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at 413-203-1360. And we thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's meeting for us. Superintendent Fallins, we do have some announcements for us.
Yes, I do. The next regular school committee meetings are March 15th, April 12th, and April 26th, 2016. The school committee will meet on February 22nd at 6:00 PM for the purpose of superintendent evaluation mid-cycle evaluation. That's me. The East Hampton Special Education Parent Advisory Council, PAC, will meet on February 10th from 6:30 to 8:30. That meeting was originally scheduled to be the Transition Workshop. The Transition Workshop had to be rescheduled to March 9th, but on March 10th, the PAC is holding a troubleshoot together meeting. This is where knowledgeable members will be able to answer questions, provide guidance, and support for parents who want to come and join that meeting. And the meetings are at East Hampton High School. There's no school February 15th to the 19th due to Washington's birthday and winter break. The White Brook Middle School Band is playing at the Springfield Falcons game on February 27th. There's a half day of school on Tuesday, March 1st due to Teacher Professional Development Day and the Presidential Primary Election. There are half-days of school on Thursday and Friday, March 17th and 18th due to parent-teacher conferences. And there is no school on Friday, March 25th due to Good Friday. There's no school April 18th through 22nd due to Patriots' Day and spring break. And we hope we don't have any other snow days in between. That's it for now.
Okay, very good. Do we have any correspondence? We do not have any correspondence this week?
We do not.
Okay, and how about gifts?
I'd like to please vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts. An anonymous $50 donation to We the People.
I move to accept the anonymous $50 donation to We the People.
All those in favor? Aye. We thank you very much. Okay, at this time, this is the public speak portion of our meeting. And at this time, we invite people to come and speak with us if they would like to. And I don't see that there's anyone here to do that, so we will move on to our subcommittee reports. And the first would be the Finance Subcommittee. And I just think I could announce for us that we have not met since our last meeting, but we have several meetings scheduled. On Tuesday, February 16th at 6:30, we will be meeting to discuss the elementary and middle school budgets. And on Monday, February 22nd at 7:00 PM, we will be focused on the high school and special education budget as well as the district and system-wide budget. And on Tuesday, March 8th at 6:30 PM, we will be working on revenue, capital projects, and our overall funding level. Then the Finance Subcommittee will be reporting to the full committee at our regular meeting scheduled for March 15th at 6:30 with regard to a recommendation for a budget for the upcoming year. So if anyone would like to attend any of those meetings, you're more than welcome to do so. We'd love to have you. Is there an update from the Policy Review Subcommittee?
Our update is that we haven't met yet, but Morrison and I just talked and we're going to set up some times for that. So at our next meeting here, we will report back on how well that's going.
Very good. Do we have any update on the Collaborative Educational Service?
No, except that the next meeting will be March 30th.
March 30th.
So I'll have something to report afterwards.
After that, okay. I'll probably ask you next meeting anyway and forget that you said that thing. Okay, sounds good. And do we have an update from Alexis, our student representative?
Yes. There's a few things going on in East Hampton High right now. The band just got back from their competition at Berkeley. They represented us very well. I have many friends and they had a fun time and it was very nice. I recently participated in We the People, which is like a history competition of knowledge of the Constitution and applying it to like modern-day type things. We placed second out of five schools, it was, and so that's really awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you. For sports, the swim team and the basketball teams have had a great season this year. And the senior nights are coming up very soon, so attend.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Alexis. Oh, and I just have to say that you did a fabulous job in the play. It was an amazing, amazing show and we all thoroughly enjoyed it and you were just a star.
And a great photo of Alexis and Jacob in Gazette a few days ago. The two of them, that was wonderful.
I missed that.
In the play.
Really? I missed that. Wow, that's excellent.
Did you want to mention the open house at the high school? You were talking about that earlier.
Oh, yes, and I wish I brought the flyer with me, but there's an open house this Thursday at East Hampton High School. And there's a time, a special time for parents of incoming freshmen, eighth-grade parents, to have an overview of what's going on at the high school, schedule, all kinds of valuable, helpful information. And I want to say this, check the website, but I think it's an hour before the actual open house for everyone else, which I believe starts at 7:00. So I'm guessing it's probably 6:00, but double-check the website on that. But that's for incoming freshmen, families of incoming freshmen. And then there's a lot going on also at 7:00 for, what I recall reading is that there were all kinds of groups that were having information available at night, hoping to recruit new parents and additional getting people involved in our schools in new and different ways. And there's all kinds of different facets of our school community being represented and wanting to share what they do and how they do it and wanting to get more people involved. So that's happening also at roughly 6:00, I believe. And then it was at 7:00 that current high school parents can follow their students' schedule and meet their new teachers for the semester, ask questions, hear about the classes and that sort of thing. And that's always really helpful and valuable to follow their schedule and meet all their teachers. So anyway, I recommend attending. Okay, next on the agenda, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So originally this evening, we were going to have a presentation on the We the People program and, you know, what it's about and have some of our students here along with their teacher, Kelly Brown. Peter Gunn, of course, has also been very instrumental in supporting this program. But because of our snow days, I received an email from Ms. Brown over the weekend saying that she would like to be able to put it off because she thought that everybody'd be better prepared if they had a little more time in school. So we're going to have that at our next meeting in March, and we'll look forward to that. So instead of doing the We the People update this evening, I asked our school committee member, Casey Corcella, if she would talk to us a little bit about the kindergarten information night that the PTO sponsored, was it last week?
Yeah, it was last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday. And a little bit about our kindergarten programs and the efforts that we're making to help all of our families in East Hampton understand what our kindergarten programs have to offer. So Casey?
Yeah, last Tuesday, it was the second year that we've done the information night. Our outreach committee chair, Rebecca Belcher-Timmy, she kind of, she actually arranged the entire She thought of the idea last year because there really isn't anything out there that, you know, people can go to and get information about our schools. And, you know, there's a lot of, I guess, not positive things, let's say, that, you know, parents talk about that people really haven't even stepped inside of our schools. And so last year, we did this kind of around the times that charter schools are doing information nights and even private schools. And so Rebecca thought it would be a great idea to have more of an informational night, but also a question and answer, and to hear from our fourth-grade students about their experience as well as kindergarten parents. And I was lucky enough to be speaking last year as a kindergarten parent, and it was very successful. And this year, we did the same thing, and I think this year was even more successful. There was a change of venue because of the basketball team and, you know, they're undefeated, so there was a big crowd there. Instead of being in the auditorium, we were in the library at the high school, which actually worked out really well. And I think it was a more intimate setting, so I think, you know, parents coming in, they felt that they could ask questions instead of, you know, even for the fourth-grade kids, I think it was a little bit better for them because they weren't on stage. And so it was, it was really cozy and there were a lot of really good questions out there. It was a very big turnout. In the tiny tots room, which we used, we provided childcare. There were about 44 kids.
My goodness, I really did.
Which, yeah, and that meant that, you know, both parents could come. And it was great, you know, some of the little incoming kindergartners were adorable. But the parents that spoke, there were three parents that spoke from Maple and there was one parent that spoke from Pepin, who also has, she has a kindergartner, but she also has twin fourth graders. So they really spoke about their experience and the positive things that are going on in the schools. We heard from the both principals, Principal Avril and Principal Rabello spoke and they took questions. They were more of like, you know, the basic information. And then each of the kindergarten teachers spoke, which, you know, they took time, they didn't have to be there, and it just goes to show how great our teachers are, you know, and they really care about, yes, they really care about the community and they care about the families that are coming in. And so there was, you know, a lot of questions that were asked by the families and I got a lot of really good feedback. I actually was not there for the information part because when I went to the room, I stepped in as a babysitter, which was great, too. But the feedback I got from parents was really great and they got a lot out of it and they really felt a sense of community and very comfortable because, you know, it is, it's a big milestone to send your child to elementary school. And I think that they felt a lot of comfort. And, you know, I can speak from my experience sending my child to kindergarten last year. I had an amazing experience and my child did as well. And I got that same sense of comfort when I met her kindergarten teacher last year and also meeting the administrators and working with the PTO. I'm able to also, you know, work with Judy Avril from Maple. And the way that they collaborate together, she and Allison Rabello, both principals, it's wonderful because it really is one, you know, there's two different elementary schools, but they work together so well as one. And, yeah, I think that our kindergarten teachers are amazing. And there's so many great things going on in the schools and, yeah, I was really happy to be part of it. And, you know, we'll continue, the PTO is always available, you know, you can come to a meeting where you're the first Wednesday of every month. And we have a Facebook page as well, it's East Hampton PTO. And you can message us if you have any questions or, I know that there's going to be school visits coming up in March as well. And so, you know, everybody's very open and if you have, if you want to come check out the schools or if parents have any questions even from another parent's perspective, please don't hesitate to, you know, email me or like send a message to the Facebook page. So, yeah, that was my experience.
That's wonderful.
And I heard from several parents, too, over this past weekend who said that they had attended and found it really helpful, you know, and just in terms of kind of like making plans for the next year and that the information was really on target. It was the kind of stuff they were looking for and they really appreciated, especially getting to hear from the teachers and the principals, so.
And I wanted to mention, too, that there was, there were four fourth graders that spoke. And I really, they spoke first and I heard there was one parent in the audience that said, "Oh, I'm definitely sending my kids here because of the fourth graders." And it was, they each spoke of very different experiences and one in particular spoke of, you know, from her social experience and using the school psychologist. It was great because, you know, that's a piece of the education as well and how she felt very comfortable in the school. And, you know, she kind of joked about saying that she has, she needs some help socially, but it was good to hear each of their point of views, so.
I think it's really welcoming and I think that people get comfortable and that is a huge success and thank you for all the time that you put into that.
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome.
The PTO, it's really great.
It was a wonderful event. I was kind of going between the basketball game and the kindergarten information night, but there was such a good crowd there and, as you said, a very good, warm feeling and people are really very engaged and comfortable, very comfortable.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we also, we encourage name tags so that families could meet each other because, you know, they're coming in from different childcare centers or not having childcare at all. And we will also be doing kindergarten playdates in the summer, which is something that we've done the last two years. And that's been great, too, because at that point, the kindergartner will get to meet their teacher, they'll have their teacher assigned and.
It's a big deal.
Yeah, and those have been really successful, too. So we've got a great community here. Great community. Thank you.
And also to compliment you, Nancy, your updates on the website are really going over you. People comment to me about it all the time. You know, it's just, again, you know, information, the more information out there, people are just getting really excited about it and comfortable with it. So thank you for that, too.
Well, I sometimes think that our school district is one of the best-kept secrets in Massachusetts, so I'm trying to make it not such a well-kept secret.
No secret.
Right. And one of the new features on the superintendent update is people in the community who don't have children in our schools can now subscribe to the superintendent update as well. And there's information at the end of the update on how to do that because we did have some requests from community members who'd like to know what's going on in the schools. So I think the more we can publicize all of the wonderful things that are going on in our schools and, you know, our wonderful students and teachers and administrators, you know, it's just a way of making that connection with our community, so.
And I didn't, you know, there are a lot of families that are moving into the area. There are a lot of families that are not from East Hampton and so that was interesting to me, to see kind of the changing demographic of people that are moving into the area. And so it was, it was very successful, so.
It was, it was great. Thank you, Casey, for all you did.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Casey? Okay. Now, I'm going to just talk a little bit about the Massachusetts School Building Association process that we're in. I'm trying to keep you updated on all the steps. Mayor Kager and I were busy last week doing another exciting step in this process. So what we're doing right now, we're in the midst of hiring what's called an owner's project manager. The owner's project manager oftentimes referred to as the OPM, so you'll hear that, manages the whole project for us, makes sure that everything's running well, helps us choose the designer, really keeps on top of every step along the way. And so the process for hiring this owner's project manager is spelled out very specifically by the School Building Authority, the MSBA. And so the first thing we had to do was form a selection committee. So the school building committee, our local school building committee chose a selection committee. And the members of the selection committee were Mayor Kager, myself, Dale Doran, who's our Director of Business Services, Melissa Zawodski, who's the City Treasurer, and also David Boyle, who's a community member and businessman here in East Hampton. So we got together. Before we actually got together, we had a request for services that the MSBA had sent us and we had to do that in a very specific way and we had to advertise it. We had 21 respondents to our request for services. And then finally, eight of those respondents submitted responses by the due date to our committee. And so the committee reviewed the proposals, the eight proposals, and we decided that there were three that we were really very interested in and wanted to go forward with interviews for those three. So we, so we had this one meeting to choose the three. We had a lot of material to look through because they'd each given us full packets of information. And then once we had chosen the three, we determined what questions we were going to ask and what process we were going to use in trying to narrow the field down to the one candidate that we wanted to put forward. Dale Doran did an excellent job of facilitating this for all of us, creating the, she helped us create the questions. We had rubrics for scoring the questions. We had rubrics for scoring the materials that they had sent to us. And then they came in for an interview. And during the interview, they had 15 minutes to do a little presentation to us, you know, PowerPoint presentation, tell us about themselves, introduce themselves to us. And then we had an opportunity for the rest of the hour to ask them our series of questions and score our questions using our rubric. And it was a very interesting process. At the end of the interviews, we talked a little bit at the end of each interview and then we met again to really kind of finalize our discussion. We decided that really any of the three of them could have had the skills and the knowledge and the company to be able to do this job for us. So then it was a matter of narrowing it down to who was the best candidate for us. And we wanted to find the group that we felt was the best match for our community. So although they had comparable skills, we wanted the group that we felt would help us put our project forward because they're very instrumental in that, in the stage where we're explaining it to the community, trying to build support and consensus around the project. And so we finally chose, and it was a unanimous decision, Colliers International. Colliers International, interestingly enough, bought out Strategic Building Solutions. Strategic Building Solutions were our OPM, they were the OPM for our high school project. So we have worked with them before, you know, it was a very good experience for us, working with them. And so, you know, they met all the criteria and, again, just felt like the right people for us. So we extended our offer to them. They were thrilled to think that, you know, they'd be working with us again. And so now we have to negotiate with them on a contract. March 7th, we have to bring the negotiated contract and, you know, they will come with us to an MSBA meeting in Boston. I don't know how many of us they want there, but I know they want some of our committee there and the OPM. So that'll be March 7th and if everything is in order, they will approve our selection, which is wonderful. And then they will go on to help us choose the design team for the high school, the architects. And that's another long, involved process, not as long as it might be. But we feel like we're moving along at a very nice pace, getting everything done in a timely manner and moving ahead rather than dragging it out. We're trying to do it as quickly as we can and we're very excited about it. Karen, I don't know if you wanted to add anything else?
Well, I think exactly what you said. The competition was extremely tight and honestly, it was a really nice collaboration of the committee, of the selection committee. And to, you know, to be meeting during the process was very long and meeting during that and then again after. And honestly, it was a wonderful experience that we were all able to arrive at the same thing based on a lot of the same scoring criteria. And I have to say that when we entered the last time with the high school, the MSBA process was new, it was brand-new, this specific process. And now, I can't say enough about their assistance on this, their guidance, the strict criteria. And so I'm very pleased with the way we're going. If anything, like we have met our deadlines, each deadline, we've actually met them, you know, earlier than needed. And I don't think they could be more helpful. So far, it's been an extremely wonderful experience and it's just been going so positive and smoothly. So I think we're all very, very, very excited about it.
Now, if I understand you correctly, when you, when you meet your deadline, you can then move forward? It's not like you.
That's correct.
Exactly, okay.
They'll have a whole schedule of deadlines, but as you meet them, then the new ones move up.
Okay, so it's not like you have to wait until what they have.
Exactly, and that is one of the, one of the really positive things that we noticed early on. But I mean, if you have any questions at all, they are right there, whether it's a phone call, an email. And I think it came out in the meetings also and after how much we extremely appreciate Dale's help. She has just been just so, her assistance has just been fantastic. It's great to have her on board.
She's done a great job of facilitating the process.
And now, you said choosing the architect, is that the OPM that chooses or the state?
No. First of all, well, actually, all of us. And so there'll be another selection committee, which is pretty much the same except instead of Dave Boyle, it's Tom Brown, correct, Nancy?
I'm not sure about that. I know there are certain people they want. I think there's three of us.
Right.
Who have to go. And I'm not sure who they are yet.
Right, for the designer. But the, when, in choosing the designer, the OPM was our decision.
Okay.
You know, the city's decision made up of our selection committee, which is part of the school building committee. But when it comes to the designer, the state, which is MSBA, weighs heavily in on it. As a matter of fact, they have more votes than we do on it.
I think they have six votes and we have three.
Three, so it's different.
Yeah, but the OPM helps us go through that process of looking at different designers, thinking which one's going to be the right one for us. And then also, once we, we as a committee choose the one we think is the one we want, the OPM will help us put forward that candidate to the board, the MSBA board, because they have the final decision. They could say, "No, you know, we don't think this is the right one. We want you to use this one," which might not be the one we wanted to use.
Right.
So the OPM is very instrumental in helping us in this next phase. And so, you know, we're pleased that we've got an OPM that we've worked with before and feel comfortable with and who, you know, helped us do what we wanted to do in the last one. And I think that, you know, we have evidence of an OPM that we worked with very well and clearly a design team for the high school. I mean, I think the whole community is very pleased with the high school. Right, Alexis?
Yeah, definitely.
So, and yes, as the mayor said, we are moving along as fast as we can. We're not waiting for the deadlines, we're trying to get it done even before the deadline.
Yeah, I acknowledge you both for that. And, you know, I know that it's probably a lot to go through, but, you know, that's great.
Well, the excitement is there.
It's exciting.
It is, so that helps a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions on that?
I just have to say, having served on the school building committee for the high school, I worked closely with Mel Overmeyer and Strategic Business Solutions and I just second everything you all have said. They were fabulous.
He was wonderful to work with.
And so professional, so helpful, there for us at every moment. You just couldn't say enough good about them. And so I didn't know what it would mean with Collier International buying them out, what that would mean and how that might change things, but it's pretty exciting, I think, to think that we're going to be able to work with the same people.
Well, and we actually asked them that question.
Exactly.
Do you want to talk about that?
No, go ahead, Nancy. But it's funny, that was one of the questions that came up in our interviews.
Because Colliers is such a huge company and we wanted to make sure that we were going to get that same kind of individual attention we got. And so what they said to us is that Colliers had bought them pretty much intact. So they're still the same people, company that they were, but now it's just another part of Colliers because Colliers was wanting that particular kind of aspect to their business. So we felt very comfortable about that.
And that now, they just have even more resources that they can tap into and offer to us. So it became a plus. So one of the things that was our concerns and a couple of the other companies had the same thing, were bought out by larger companies. So it actually ended up being a plus instead of, you know, instead of answering our concerns, it became an added plus.
Yes, good. I'm excited.
And we'll keep you updated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our minutes from our January 26th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second?
And now warrants and payroll.
First, the payroll. I move to approve the school payroll dated February 4th, 2016, in the amount of $463,858.23.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Oh, I'm supposed to say. Forgive me. We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded to approve the school payroll dated February 4th, 2016, in the amount of $463,858.23.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Second it again.
Did, did we vote?
We did, we voted, okay, I'm sorry. So, all those in favor, one more time, yes, thank you very much. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Well, we had that practice.
I'm trying to learn to remember to repeat everything.
For accounts payable, I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated February fourth, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of two hundred twelve thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-three cents.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. To approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated February fourth, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of two hundred and twelve thousand six hundred, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you very much. And we need people to stick around to sign things, yes.
Can I just have one question?
Yes.
Somebody asked me over the weekend if there, like, there's been just a lot of discussion within East Hampton, and I think within the state generally, about charter schools and the impact of charters on East Hampton public schools, and a parent asked me recently, like, what, like, what can she do to, like, to learn more about that, and to kind of get the word out about that, other than just like lobbying and writing letters? And I, you know, I suggested just kind of like talking with other people, and like, having discussions with your neighbors, and kind of the things that people are already doing, but I just wanted to know if anybody else had any suggestions, or if there was anything coming up that anybody knew about.
Well, Senator Rosenberg did, was out here to, to, and I think he's done his two sessions, Karen, do you remember?
I don't know.
I did one, I think he's done both.
I think he was supposed to be in Amherst Friday, and I think that that was his, he canceled his appearance there.
Yeah, so maybe he'll reschedule, so, you know, I would keep looking in the papers, there are a number of opinion pieces and letters to the editor that kind of help you think about the different sides, both the charter, pro-charter side and the, the other side that is more the public school side, you know, most of the Western Massachusetts superintendents, I think I mentioned this to you before, maybe it was a different venue, have collaborated on some opinion pieces and letters to the editor, trying to explain, you know, our position, and, and how the charter schools and the funding formula for charter schools has a negative impact on, on public schools. I certainly could do a session on it, you know, with the school committee, if you'd like.
I think that would be helpful, I think that would be great.
And, and I can put things in the superintendent update to just try to give you a, a history and a perspective, and, and why it's so challenging for, for school districts, so.
And especially now, I think this is probably the most perfect time for it, because, as you mentioned, your, your finance subcommittee is starting to go into your budget sessions, and you will see with the budget how extremely detrimental the funding of charter schools is to our budget. And if anyone has, and, and I applaud you, what you've been doing is, you know, having them talk to other people, which is great, you know, parents talking to parents, but if they have any specific questions, and again, there's so many different opinions on choice and charter, but our main concern for our district is how it affects, you know, the, the personal choice of the parent is not where we go with it, where we are going with it is how the funding, it is a matter of the way they're funded. So we'd like to stick with that, and if anyone has any questions at all, they can, you know, put them in touch with, you know, our superintendent, or, or myself, and, and again, you will be shocked when you see, or probably not so much, some of you, the, you know, the detrimental to the funds that we lose, that we desperately need for our public education, and that's really what it's about, it's about taking public funds away from us.
Right.
Okay?
So I'd be happy to do a, a presentation.
Yeah, that would be lovely.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, like anything else, when you see it in black and white, and you see, you know, what goes out and what comes in, and, you know, what it, what it cost, what it really, bottom line costs us, that's what it comes down to. So when you hear about reimbursements that we receive, first of all, there's no such thing as a hundred percent reimbursement, so when you hear that, that is absolutely natural, so, and, you know, proof is in the figures.
And then when it goes to the charter schools, and there's no accountability to the people of East Hampton, what happens in that school, whereas, of course, in the public school, we as the committee and their superintendent are accountable to East Hampton voters for where the money is going.
Cool, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question, too, that might be helpful for, you know, for people watching, that's come to me a couple of times, because of, we fi, not, I don't mean finally had snow days, but with the two, with the two, excuse me, with the two snow days we had, and, and again, I don't know if things have changed, but typically the districts kind of would allow snow days, but they're added on, or, you know, so, if you don't mind explaining how that works, Nancy, I know we've only had two.
Yeah, they, they are added on to the school year, because we have to have, you know, a certain required number of days for students and required for teachers. We also have to, according to our contract, not be in school beyond June thirtieth, so that means that if we have too many snow days and we're running out of days in June, then we have to figure out where else we're, we're going to get those days. And I know there were questions on particularly the Monday snow day, and, and why we didn't have a half day, I know that, that that was out there, so I'll address that. We have, we as superintendents have to make our decisions no later than five-thirty in the morning, and so, we make them based on the weather forecast, and based on reports from the DPW, and from our maintenance departments about, you know, the conditions of the roads, and, and what we think's going to happen, we also think about the timing of a storm, and clearly, what's always paramount in, in our thoughts is the safety of our, our students, and so we always err on the side of safety.
Thank you.
For our students. And I know that sometimes, you know, when it doesn't snow like it was predicted to snow, I'll take Monday, for instance, the storm was predicted to start around ten o'clock, so if it was starting around ten o'clock, then a half day and trying to dismiss at that time could have been very tricky, and, and not safe for our students, or our high school students who are driving, so that's why we decided not to try to do a half day and then get into that kind of situation, as it turned out, the storm delayed until later, but you can think about the way the storm was when it hit, and how bad the driving was, so if that had hit at ten o'clock, then that's what our dismissal would have been like. So again, it was erring on the side of caution, and, and based on the weather reports for this area, and everybody's best judgment, so that's how, that's how it happens. Unfortunately, Mother Nature doesn't always do exactly what the weather forecasters say, and, and, you know, what it appears to be at five-thirty in the morning isn't always what actually happens, so we do the best we can, it's not an easy job, but, you know, again, we just really are always thinking about safety first.
Thank you.
But I think all schools but one did the exact same thing.
Yep.
I know a little first grader was really happy. She's like, this morning, is there a snow day today? I'm like, no, not today.
Well, I, I just, I'm, thank you for doing that, Nancy, because I don't think people realize how early a decision has to be made, and, and first of all, I think everybody does realize how the weather changes, and what's reported to happen doesn't always happen, but the number one thing is, it's, we always err on the side of caution, and that is the most important thing.
Right.
And it's okay when a storm misses us, and we don't get the front that we're supposed to, so we're all okay with that, so thanks.
And the reason, the reason we have to do it so early, I guess I didn't actually explain that, is because the buses are heading out at six o'clock in the morning, bus drivers are there, and they're heading out, so we have to let them know in advance. And I will say that I do know there were some seniors who were very happy about it, too. I see some of them at Big Y, and they keep asking me if I'm going to have a snow day, especially their senior year, so.
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Great, have a good night.
Thank you very much.